Session and regular council meetings in order. Would anyone please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dillon, you want to do a roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Gerard, Mr. Gerard called a little while ago and said that he was not feeling well. So he would not be here. Mr. Devine, absent Mr. Pezzin.
Here.
Ms. Callum.
Here.
Ms. Roddick is.
Here.
Mr. Gordon.
President.
Mr. Petrosian.
If not public participation, anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Go to the podium and state your name for the record. Your address.
Sure, fine. My name is.
Right here.
Right here?
That podium.
Right here.
The podium.
Where the microphone at?
Okay, sorry.
The microphone.
Hi, how are you? Uh, my name is Mary Ann Lynch. I am the executive director of Women's Place. We are Bucks County's domestic violence response center. And every year Bristol Borough has been so generous in allowing us to tie ribbons around the house in the community to bring awareness to domestic violence during the month of October. We are respectfully requesting once again to do that on September 25th this year. And I just want to put in information about Women's Place. We serve all residents of Bucks County. We have a 24/7 hotline, 1-800-220-8116. If you know someone who's experiencing domestic violence, or if you want to help, give us a call. And we can be there on the other end of the phone 24/7. We have counseling services, legal services. We also provide shelter and safe housing for people who are experiencing abuse. So thank you so much for your support.
Could you just repeat the phone number once more?
Sure. It's 1-800-220-8116. And there's someone on the other end of the line, 24/7.
And just to reiterate what she's saying, every year we have had the Women's Place come into town. They were once in Bristol. And they always come in, put the ribbons up, they have volunteers.
We're still here.
Are you sure?
We're still here. 97 Wood Street is our official Bristol address.
Okay, good, good. That's good to put that out there, too. And when they do come in and put the ribbons all over town, they usually have volunteers, kids can volunteer, adults can volunteer. It's a very good program. And at the end of the time, they do come back and take them down in case somebody gets upset because they're hanging these purple ribbons and they think we're just going to leave them there and we never do. We take them down.
We'll be taking them here. And this, this year's date is September 25th. We'll be starting around 10:00 a.m. So if you'd like to come out and support your organization, we'll have a table of information there at the same time. Maybe some goodies, some water. And they really love the help. And it's just really to bring awareness to domestic violence. One of the stats I just heard recently was that 275 million children worldwide grow up in homes where there is domestic abuse.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll leave a couple of my cards here.
Is 97 Wood Street on the parking lot side?
Uh, it's his business.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why he's skipping off.
Yeah. So I'll leave a couple of my cards here.
Anyone else on this side? Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Anyone on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Hi, everybody. I'm Denise Smith. And I'm here just to ask for help for the Bristol Girl Parade, our holiday parade. Ellen Scanzella does this almost single-handedly every year. And she needs our support. It's going to be November the 27th, Saturday. And it is, I mean, I've been going to this parade since I was a little girl. And I want to see it in town.
You're so young, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph, because you do rock that hat on. Big day. She needs our support. I have the volunteers.
You know, every year we donate $2,500.
I know they do. But it is still a lot of, it's still really bad.
Your mask, because they can't hear you with your mask on.
Okay. Yeah. I can do that. I can do that for me. I don't look like it's possible.
Please, not to interrupt you. What you're looking is for physical help, like people in the town that want to volunteer and help with the parade.
And donations as well. She was saying that she needs a sponsor for the horse and carriage and for all kinds of things. And help.
So where can people send, or how do they contact you?
I have all the information right here. I'll leave it. The number is 215-789-0177. And that's Ellen Scanzella. And everybody knows her. She is, she's a sweetheart. And she needs help, so.
Can you repeat that one more time, the phone number? Thank you.
And November 27th, Saturday, parade date the 28th. It's a Bristol tradition. We don't want to see it go. And man, when that parade happens, you see everybody, the streets are lined up, nobody cares about anything else except that parade and having a great time. It brings all the families out. It brings our community together in a positive manner.
Yes.
So we need that to continue. Yes.
I just have a question. What's involved? Did you say they're looking for a sponsor for the?
Yeah.
For, is that with San and?
Yes. This is the horse and carriage for San and Mrs. Cause, as a matter of fact. Yes, yes, absolutely. So please, anybody and everybody that's listening, if you have monetary donations, that's always great. But physical donation, you know, physical help is always welcome too. So, and I'll leave this information.
Yeah, these are the, that you gave me to help the council people.
Got a bunch of them.
Thanks, Denise.
Denise, I'll be looking for you to dance with at the Duop Saturday.
I may not be here. I have a family crisis, but I tell you what, you dance for me.
I will.
Okay?
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Okay, that ends public participation. Mayor?
Did you say mayor?
Pardon me?
Call me mayor.
That's okay. Want me to come back to you?
No, I'm good.
If we're the mayor's cars, can I just say one thing? He's back. Thank you. We missed that for a long time, but he's back and we're all happy to have him back.
I want to say to you, babe. I want to thank everybody for all the phone calls, emails, cards, letters. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we're, we're back for good. Not sure I'll be at everything for the first month or two, but I hope to be to the parade, that's for sure. During the month, let's see. I've been in contact, even though I haven't been here, with Chief Henry and Chief Slack during my time away. You know, I always bring up every month about the number of calls for service. And looking at what's been going on so far, still looks like we're a little around 800 calls for service a month in Bristol Borough. And that's just a little bit below what we had last year. I don't think there's anything of other major consequence going on in the police department other than I am sad, if you don't already know, to report that Chief Henry has decided to retire after his stay here for about six years. He surely has brought a lot of new, innovative, and made us all aware of what it takes to run a police department today. I think we're going to miss him. I hope he'll give us some input into what type of candidate we should be interviewing, although I know council will take care of that. I hope to have some input on that. Fire. The fire companies have, I don't know if you remember, but council had done a request for a survey, state survey, and that was completed. Basically, I have asked council to support me in an effort to bring all this together. The fire companies have been working together. There are, we are four fire companies, as we all know now, in the borough. You know, with their allocation is four fire companies. And then the state fire allocation will be for four companies this year. So they're working very hard. They have a company that they hired that will, is leading them through the process of forming an association, which is the primary recommendation in the state survey was that the fire companies look to form an association together, whatever name they want to call it. And, and that would be the first big step in complying with it. The next big step will be council changing the ordinance. I know we've submitted a preliminary ordinance to Mr. Dillon, who said he would give it to Mr. Salerno. It's very preliminary. So that all has to be restructured. Also, the fire department has, under the ordinance currently, a position of two deputy fire chiefs. We have a fire chief and two deputies. Currently, we only have one deputy. Chief Slack and chief, and deputy chief Goslin have recommended to me that we put that second deputy chief's position back in, you know, actually, council appoint somebody to that position. They have both recommended to me Alexander J. DeAngelis. Actually, everybody calls him A.J. DeAngelis. He's the chief downstairs at Station 50. I have his complete resume here. Anybody like to sit? Or was it in your packet? I don't know. He is well qualified for the position. And they both recommended that we submit his name. And one of the challenges, you know, a couple of months back, the couple of township companies got together, sent a letter. We have yet to be able to get together to meet, but I will, will tell you this. We've been working together with those companies over the last couple of months. We seem to be getting along well. I'll try and resuscitate that meeting if they still want to meet. I know Ralph had talked to me earlier. Chief Slack had put in for a grant through FEMA. And the Bristol Consolidated Fire Company and Bristol Fire Company have been awarded a FEMA Assistant Firefighter Grant as part of a regional grant to replace outdated self-contained breathing apparatus. If you put in as a region, you get, you have a better chance of getting it. So Chief Slack reached out to the Bristol Township Fire Companies and Third District Fire Company and Newportville Fire Company. And Cornwall's of Ben Salem joined it. The award total will be shared by all five companies is $638,545.45. The two borough fire companies are projected to receive a total of $231,500. And this is all for breathing equipment that the firemen wear to go into the buildings. Each fire company will be required to provide a 10% match of their share, approximately $12,500 each. Final cost will be determined from the quote Chief Slack has asked to pass on to council if they could include that $25,000 in the budget to cover the 10% cost. We won't know. I think it's another month or so before we finally know what the total costs are. And I think that's it for me.
Chief, do you have anything?
I just wanted to thank again the DeCaro family for the Bristol Borough Police Night Out Fair, St. Anne's Carnival. And thank you personally, Ralph, for assisting with that. We've had over 400 of the borough kids get treated to that night. I think it was a pretty great event. Hope some of that continues. Schools open, please drive carefully. Sergeant Fait had his safety briefing with all of the crossing guards as he does every year. So again, just asking the public to be aware that the kids are out there crossing. And today, we signed criminal complaints against Angela Citron. Mr. Citron was the individual back in July when we had the shooting incident on Route 13. It was a road rage incident that started in the borough. It was like a car chase throughout the borough. It ended on Pine Street and ended up in what we suspected was a barricade situation. We had information from residents that the individual had actually went into that residence and we believed him to be armed. At that point, South Central, excuse me, the South SWAT team was notified. We inconvenience the residents in our street for their safety for until the wee hours of the morning until the SWAT team made entry after we secured a search warrant. And unfortunately, he was not in the residence. We didn't give up on it. We kept after it. And we did find out that he was in the neighborhood. He had basically forced his way into another residence and actually laid in wait until we had left that scene the next morning. So after putting a lot of pieces together, a lot of good police work, we had enough probable cause today to sign a warrant. So he's still an active individual, but we'll eventually bring him to justice. That's it.
Ralph, I have one more thing. You done, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to, I don't know if anybody knows this or really cares, but our EMA manager and myself sit on the Dowell Community Advisory Board. And we've been working the last four years trying to get a generator for the high school. And lo and behold, we were successful this year in doing that. Dowell Corporation is going to be tearing up their old engineering building down and they have this perfectly good million-dollar generator sitting there. And they've been kind enough to donate it. Merle coordinated a lot of this with Freddie Cullen and Dennis at the school. And we were able to get it moved. It was another $30,000 to bring in the company to lift up everything and transport it here. As of this date, all costs have been covered. And the school has a brand-new, I don't know, what is that, Merle? 980,000 KW generator? Probably could run half the, half the town.
That's great.
Which will enable us to have another emergency center.
That's right.
If you have a major snowstorm or something, we can put that there. I just wanted to.
That is, that's great. Thank you.
Positive, good.
That's it.
Any other questions for the chief? Chief, I, Roy, sad to see you leave. I'll be honest with you. You brought a lot of class and dignity to this borough and a lot of people respect you, so you're going to truly be missed.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate the support that I've had from all of you on here. And I think, you know, it was a good learning experience for everybody. But I really enjoyed the back and forth that I had openness with the council members.
Not Lorraine, though.
Huh?
Not Lorraine.
I know. You looked right at me and you said.
I'm all the kid.
She always knows when to call at the exact time.
That's it.
It was like Sunday at 5:00 in August.
Right.
But no.
So when?
It's a phenomenal borough, phenomenal people. And I really miss this group.
You will miss it.
When officially do you have, are you going to be here for the November meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're here, are you here until the end of the year or until November?
I gave them November 17th because in the agreement that we have, it said you needed a three-month window. So I don't want to put you in a bad way. So we can work that out with Mr. Dillon, but that's.
All right. There is a date established, because the last time we talked, there was not a date.
Yeah, I needed to give him a solid date just for his, for that aspect of it.
All right. Other questions for the chief? So Craig, you have something you want, I don't want to hold you up all night. So if you want to go to the podium?
Thanks, Ralph, and member of council. I just wanted to remind everyone, invite them out. Saturday night, after a couple of years off, the Duop concert is going to return to Bristol Borough. I think it's going to be just an amazing night. So many people have been asking about it. Ralph, you know how long you've been working on it. So it's this Saturday night, September 18th. The music's going to start at 5:00. There is eight groups this year. So it's going to be a hell of a show. It's Joel Katz and the Dynamics, the Chiclets, the Elegance, Bill Haley Jr. and the Comments doing a salute to his father. That should be pretty good. The videos of him were outstanding. The Happenings, Eddie Holman, The Times, and the return of Bobby Wilson. If everybody was there, it's about three years ago now, four years ago. That's Jackie Wilson's son. Could have been maybe the best act we've ever had in the park.
Yep.
We'd be cooking out.
I agree.
So we'll be there. And at the last meeting, we were assured he is doing a full show. It's not a 15-minute. So Bobby Wilson could be done anywhere from 40 minutes to an hour.
Beautiful.
That should be a great show.
Beautiful.
For anybody that's driving, you know, parking wouldn't be a problem since the events in the parking lot. We are going to have parking behind the Lennox Building. And there'll be bus shuttles starting at 4:00. The shuttles are going to run continuously until 11:00. We'll also be doing our Bristol trivia, you know, giving away gift certificates, gift certificates for all the restaurants in town. There's going to be food trucks, vendors, and please, bring your money because we got a 50/50 raffle and we got to support the Duop concert going forward. God forbid it should rain. The rain date is Sunday, September 19th. But once again, please share, tell everybody, bring your lawn chairs. This Saturday starts at 5:00. What time is the rain?
Both rain dates are, both days are 5?
I believe both rain dates are 5.
Okay.
And weather's starting to change in our direction. I got to look at that.
Let's see if the rain date is 5.
Yeah, I, I didn't. When the, I don't know.
If Anna's watching the meeting, she'll text me to correct me if I'm wrong.
Anybody have any questions about the sponsor?
No.
It's a free event. There's plenty of parking and there's bus shuttle, so everybody can come out and have a good time.
Wonderful.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Craig. Thanks for your help and all you do for this town. I'm going to go first because I usually go last, but I got a couple of things I want to.
I'm going to sit back and relax.
Sit back and relax. All right, so let's, let me just get it out there before, I know how everybody feels about trash. Trash has been a total nightmare in this town. So we're, you know, we're at a point now where the residents are unhappy, council's been unhappy, and we're doing everything we can to try to get this resolved. This isn't just a Bristol Borough thing. This is if you look at Pennsylvania, the eastern part of Pennsylvania and all over, even New Jersey, everybody's having problems. There's trash out in Northampton, I heard, for four days and still sitting on the streets. New Town, New Hope, so no matter where you go, there's a trash problem. It's, like I said, it's not a Bristol Borough thing. But, you know, we're fed up. I called Mascara personally on Friday, but I heard they weren't coming in again. And he said, look, we're doing everything we can. We're going to pick up what we can pick up. If we got to work Saturday and Sunday, we will clean this town up and hopefully get back on schedule. Now, they're doing tomorrow, they said they are coming tomorrow to pick up trash. Hopefully, Friday, they could pick up trash. They know, they know there's a problem. They know we're unhappy. But I want to clear up a couple of things. One, we did not give Mascara an extra $2 million. Whoever, you know, people that are writing this stuff down or talking about this, they're clueless. They are under the same contract this year ends their original five-year contract. If you want to write that down, Mr. Bixler, because I know you.
I didn't say anything.
No, I'm just saying.
It wasn't me.
No, I'm just saying.
It wasn't me.
But I'm saying, we're, I just want you to know too, because I know you talk to a lot of people. They are still working on their five-year contract. We exercised our option to bring them in for two more years. If we didn't exercise that option today, when we did, they would not want that contract right now. Because they can't find the help. And they would never be obligated to fulfill that contract. They said to me on the phone, that was the worst decision they made was to accept that additional two years. Because trash after this two years is going to be astronomically high. They just, it's just going to be the nature of the beast right now. So they're, and they're also not getting an extra 50 cents. There's a contract for five years with a two-year option. We didn't give them more money to say, well, we're going to give you more. All we did was over the three, last, this year and the next two years, make the same amount of money go across for three years. They didn't get any more money. And again, I think the best thing we did was exercise that option because you're going to see trash contracts are going to be through the roof in the next. If we were at the bid right now, because it ends this year, I guarantee you could add 30, 40% to our contract. And if anybody thinks I'm nuts, watch what's going to happen in two years. So that's the first thing.
They did come in Sunday to finish.
They did come in Sunday to finish.
They did.
So, I mean, look.
Can I, can I add something to that? I, I agree with everything that you just said. You know, and Mascara's obviously been a big and professional outfit. So if we had gone even with a smaller one, I would guess it would be even worse. That said, I think we all agree, we still pay them handsomely. And, you know, we expect, we expect service. There's a lot of businesses, many of us in business will tell you, that are struggling with labor. It's a real thing. It's a hard thing on any business. And we have been patient and I think we'll remain patient, but we really, all of us, I know we've had these conversations, are equally frustrated. That's all.
And also, Jim has a, a personal in with somebody there. If somebody calls me, tells me that they didn't get picked up yet, I contact Jim, he contacts the person, and that's it. Then they say, oh, we're coming back the next day, the next day, whatever. So they are trying to work with us. It's upsetting, it's frustrating. I mean, my trash was out for three days, you know, but it's the nature of the beast right now.
I mean, the problem is, look, we're all taxpayers. We all pay for trash removal. So we're unhappy too. But the problem is, when you're showcasing your town on a weekend and you have people coming in for the Mill Street Run, for the food festival, for people just walking the Mill Street, or weddings.
A wedding dinner.
I mean, you, you know, you see trash all over town, it's embarrassing. But, I mean, I talk to them, I talk to the owner. It's not like I'm talking to somebody that doesn't have any power, control. They take my call and they says, look, we'll come to a meeting. Do you want us there in October? You know, we're going to do the best we can to get back on schedule, so.
Also, Ralph, we take our own trash away from the area down at the Wharf. Because I saw something on there that I guess they're not going to take the trash from the Wharf. That, that is not even a part of their, you know, they're not even involved in that.
Our guys empty trash three days.
Yes.
A week, plus weekends. We have people going in. The trash, the trash cans in town are being used for the wrong thing. It was for somebody walking by that had soda that wanted to throw a cup.
Pizza box.
They're eating lunch down there.
Beer box.
They're pizza boxes. And they shove it in the top and they don't put it down. So everybody just throws trash on top of it and it's all over the ground and our guys got to pick it up. So nobody's, nobody's sitting here saying, we, we're okay with what's going on. We're not okay with what's going on. But we're trying to work through it, just like every other township and borough in Bucks County and throughout the state of Pennsylvania. That's the first thing. The second thing is, PICO, I don't know where, another stupid rumor is they're ripping up all our streets and we should take out money. If anybody rips up a street, PICO comes in or Aqua, they fix what they ripped up. It's not a taxpayer thing. And some of these people run for office. This is how bad these people, imagine them sitting here. But anyway, anybody that rips up a street or does a gas line or does electric or Aqua, they are responsible to fix that, whoever they excavate it will be taken care of. Again, I want to jump on what the chief said about the St. Anne, St. Mark Carnival. It was a huge success for the parish. Everybody knows Ernie DeCaro and his wife are very good friends of mine. They sponsored, I think it was 435 borough residents, kids that went on the rides free because of their generosity. And he also fed them whatever they wanted to eat, pizza and hot dogs and fries. The kids had a ball. And, uh, I mean, he will continue to do it, like the chief said, hopefully this is something that we started that will continue in town. We also had a couple other, uh, people that our political committee paid for. Saturday night, we took five hours off wristbands, and, uh, our Democrat chairman, John Credisco, paid, uh, for all the St. Mark's kids on Thursday night to ride free. So, it was a pretty good week for kids in town, they all enjoyed it, they all had a lot of fun, it was a lot of work, but it's a, it's a great fundraiser for the church, and I'm honored to be part of this and, and still running it for them for years. With that said, is, I'm a little disappointed that we lost Italian Day in town. So, last year, uh, was COVID, and then this year they decided to do away with it, and they started a food fest, three-day food festival, which is great, I think the Lions do a great job, and I want to support them in any way I can, but I'm asking council for their blessing to, I want to now run Italian Day. So, I'm gonna take that project on, it's not like I need another project with everything else. I mean, I got the carnival, I got the rescue squad, I got council, but, I mean, there's ethnic days that are down there, there's, and I think that Italian Day needs to be brought back, but I want to bring it back the way it was 40 years ago, with a ton of vendors and a lot of different things. Can I pull this off? I don't know.
This year, calendar year?
This, yeah, for August, for September of next year.
Oh, right, I got you.
Twenty-two.
You scared.
I thought you meant you were trying to...
It'll be, it'll be the weekend before the Do-Up, and if they want to do the food festival, they could do that, pick another date, but Italian Day was always the last second Saturday, it was in August, and they moved it to September. So, anybody in town that wants to join being this venture, or anybody wants to help in any way, please contact the borough and, uh, let them know, give, leave your number here at the borough, and I will contact you, but I can guarantee you one thing, I try to do a lot of things right, next year's Italian Day will be very, very interesting, and people are gonna have a good time.
Pizza freed again, right?
Everything, I'm trying to get everything done.
Oh, my God.
I already talked to vendors in New York, I already talked to vendors that do the, uh, Italian Day in, uh, Jersey, and I like to do it on Sunday. That's the way, that's when it should be done, on Sunday. I know that the rain date's the cushion, but we'll put the Blessed Mother in a window and just hope for good weather, so...
That's right.
Right, Mara?
That's right.
So, if nobody has a problem with that, I'm gonna move forward and start forming committees, and do I need to get this date from council? How do I get this date?
I'm gonna apply an application.
No problem. Okay.
I love it, I love it.
I want to fill it out.
Now we know who the real bosses around here.
So, anybody from council that wants to help, or being involved with it, or borough residents, I, I appreciate their help. So again, call the borough, uh, email JDillon@Bristolborough.com, or e, or call and talk to Lisa or Mara, and tell them you're interested in helping with the Italian Day Festival for, for next year.
Very exciting.
I think that's all I might have for now. And again, I want to thank Herbie for, our fire chief, for getting this, uh, $638,000 in for, uh, the fire apparatus. And the last thing is the street sweeper, let's clear one more thing up. You know, it's election time, everybody's got a lot to say. The street sweeper, we, we're applying for a grant through the RDA, hopefully we get that money. If we don't get that money, the money is in through our, uh, refuse and our, uh, liquid fuels to purchase a sweeper, which we were going to do last year, but with COVID, but for us to order this sweeper, we need to do it now, for next, maybe have it ready for March, April of next year. That's how long it takes to get one, just like we're ordering a new ambulance again for the rescue squad, we won't have that now until probably August of next year. That's, if we're lucky to get it in August of next year. So that's how backed up everything is. Okay, I'm done.
Michael.
What do you have, buddy?
Um, I just wanted to mention that this weekend, it was nice to see all the activities going on in Bristol, you know, between the, uh, the food event, the Kamar Nickel, uh, there was a wedding, uh, which is really nice to see, you know, everything that was going on. Um, and also, once again, um, you know, I constantly mention it, but I'm very, you're very lucky to have the public works, support that we have, uh, there's never an issue, they never say no, they're always, "What do you need?" Uh, also, the police department, um, all of that, so I just wanted to really mention, uh, that it was really nice to see that, and, um, and everybody showed up to the world of town, so, thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Anna Larras, she did text me, she said, "The rain date is 5 o'clock on Sunday," but she gave us a guarantee it will not rain. And I trust Anna, believe me, when she says something, something, it's, it's the truth. Okay, Lily, what do you have?
All right, I'd just like to start with a, uh, to honor the people that have been affected by 9/11. At this 20th anniversary, you see how many people, we know how many people got their lives affected that day, but 20 years later, it was, some of the stuff on TV was just, just fantastic, and, you know, it just brings you to tears when you see how this, this affected us, and hope, hope everything is, never happens again to our country. Um, on a local basis, with all this crazy weather that we've seen, I want to thank Merle and Mr. Dillon and Chief Henry and their staffs, because they've all came to, uh, you know, came to our aid, no matter what happened, they were there, and, uh, it just shows how, how great it can be when everybody works together. And, and with this bad weather, I was working at the fair, and I happened to be with, uh, one night I was with Scott Eddings from Rackland Insurance, talking about, you know, people's basements flooded, how many people flooded that never flooded before, and most didn't get paid, and some did get paid from their insurance, and he explained to me how there's a sump pump rider on homeowners' insurance. And he said, "They always recommend it to people, because if you have it and you have a sump pump and it fails to keep up, you're covered if your basement floods. If the water just cascades in, you're, you're not covered." So, uh, I would just advise people to, to talk to their insurance company, to look at this. I didn't, I didn't realize that, that was the case, uh, but it was, was good to, uh, good to know that. And he said it's relatively, uh, when you think about it, might be a, like a hundred dollars on your poli, additional a hundred dollars on your policy, but it can, anybody who went through and got their basement flooded, they know the cost, uh, the day incurred. And, last thing, I'd just like to put a plug in for Wednesday, uh, the 15th, I work with a foundation, and there's a trade show, the Ideas Trade Show in Valley Forge, uh, for contractors and municipalities and, uh, maintenance people, and even do-it-yourselfers, and free admission. It runs from like 8:30 in the morning till 3:30 in the afternoon, but if anybody's interested in seeing what's new in the industry, or want some ideas on what's going on in the, in the building trade, uh, stop in. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, where is that again?
That's the Valley Forge Convention Center.
Just talk, just go ahead.
Mike, go, Ralph?
Part of me.
Can he go?
Can I get you to go?
Go ahead.
Um, I, uh, also wanted to welcome Mayor Saxton back, it's, it's good to see you up and about, um, we're happy to see you here. And, uh, also thank the chief for, for his service, um, you know, you brought a level of professionalism that I hope we continue in, in the department as you move on, and I wish you luck in your next venture, uh, and as we explore who our next chief will be, I, I think we need to maintain those standards as well. And, uh, so, we appreciate all your efforts, sorry to see you go, but happy that you're moving on to that next stage of your life, so... Um, and then, uh, also, I just wanted to speak to the deputy chief position, um, happy for, uh, I'm happy to vote for AJ, I think he's a very qualified candidate for that job, uh, but I would also like to see, and I know the mayor agrees with this, that we continue to empower some of the younger guys in the fire fighting force, you know, uh, people like Steve Reeves, who I know, uh, you know, has been a big part of trying to help bring the departments together, and I think, uh, you know, the young guys are gonna be the future of this, so AJ's in that camp as well, um, and I, I just want to acknowledge that there are a lot of young guys out there that are trying to keep this thing going and keep it being built, and AJ and Steve and, and others, though I'm sure I'm not mentioning, are, are doing a good job, so, just want to keep those, those people on our radar as well. Uh, that's all I have.
All right.
First, I'd like to thank Herb Slack for, uh, getting the money for the fire departments. Um, I'd like to offer you, uh, best wishes to you and your family, and whatever you do, chief. And, uh, the Do-Up, um, I think we should always remember that Anthony Mucy was a big part of the Do-Up, and, um, that whole day, we all should remember him and thank him for, you know, what he did, he was really, really intricate and, and, like, he had an intricate, um, I don't know, I don't know, he just really worked hard on it, and I really thank him for that. Um, also, I'd like to thank the police for everything you did at the fair, uh, a lot of your felt guys came and put a lot of time in, and they were so good to the kids, and it was awesome. And, uh, the, the Caro family, can't thank you enough for all the money that you've given through the years, um, kids really enjoy it, and that's what it's all about, you know, it's about the kids. So, um, also, I'd like to, um, give AJ my, you know, uh, I'd like to accept him to as, as a, um, assistant, and Steve Reeves is, like I, like you said, he's a great guy, he's been doing a lot for the fire department, so, um, if we could, you know, put him in there somehow too, that would be wonderful. Um, I also want to talk about the fair and everything that goes into it. Um, I know people are sick of hearing me, but, uh, they don't know that Ralph and all of his friends, and he's got a lot of them, spend the whole week prior to this fair, from morning till night. They stop doing work, they don't go to their jobs, they're there preparing for this fair. And then the week of the fair, they're cooking, they're cleaning pans, they're doing everything, and, and this includes, I mean, Mr. Crottochi here, I mean, so many people, I shouldn't even just point up one person out, because Angelo Grislia, you know, is another, I mean, there are so many people involved in this, and it's such a great community get-together for everybody, um, and I really want to thank you, Ralph, because if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't have this. And my, my family came in from Altoona, Pennsylvania, and they said, "You people have the best town in America, this is like the best kept secret in all of America." They said, "Look at this place, look at, look at this fair that they're putting up, look at the river, look at..." I mean, we really should be thankful, and we should all want to volunteer for everything that comes up, because we have such wonderful things in this town, and, like I said, Ralph, I really appreciate it, and all of your friends are, you have good people around you. Thank you.
Thank you, but, like you said, I couldn't do it without...
I know.
People that make it possible. Okay, Betty?
Yeah, um, I'd like to thank Carla Reynolds, who's sitting out here, who helped organize Unity Day this year. I know a lot of things weren't like they used to be, we used to have all these events at the Wharf all year long, especially in the summer, we have Puerto Rican Day, African American Day, we have Italian Day, it's, it seemed to like windle down, but you made Unity Day come out, and we needed that, and then we were able to, the Puerto Ricans had their little monument, they had their little Unity Day, and it was, it was different, it was nice, I was unable to be there, but from what I heard, it was amazing. So, thank you, that's first. We also will be celebrating Puerto Rican Day next year, and then we'll be celebrating 50 years of commitment to Bristol Borough. I remember when we were young, when I was young, I'm still young, but anyway, we used to go to, um, over here across the train station, that park, that's where we celebrated Puerto Rican Day, and everybody would bring food, we'd bring our big pots with our rice and beans and everything else, and we'd make little things, and the kids would play, and that was Puerto Rican Day. Puerto Rican Day is so much different now, and now it's coming back, and they're celebrating 50 years, and I'd like to bring them in next year and give them a declaration for all the time, because this is families, like Ben the Cologne Family, the Baraco Family, the Rodriguez, like, it's so many families that have stuck together and done this. So, I look forward to seeing Italian Day, but I also look forward to seeing Puerto Rican Day. Um, I'd like to thank the chief for everything he's done for this town, for being able to be someone I can speak to and go to for a problem, and that's important, because sometimes our residents don't feel comfortable going directly to you, and they come to us, and we have to be the middle guy. And thank you, and I wish you all luck in the world. We do have a great bunch of police officers downstairs, they, I saw them at the parade, it's nice, anytime there's an event going on and I'm there, they're there, and thank you, and I, like I said, I wish you all luck in the world, I'm sorry to see you go. Um, the thing, I would like to thank the DeCaro family, because, I mean, to take on something like that at the fair and pay for all the children to be able, and for anybody else, like for, for everyone involved, Louis was involved, Michael was involved, Lorraine was involved, Greg, everybody that gets involved, but Ralph is the leader, whether people like it or not, Ralph gets it started and gets it done, and that's who we always need, someone who can get it done, and he does. So, thank you for working so hard, every volunteer in Bristol Borough that had volunteered, People complain about the street sweeper, I see it, I don't comment, I just watch. You can't complain if you're throwing debris into the street, if the trees, if there's a storm and now there's a whole bunch of tree branches in the street, the street sweeper's job is not to come and pick that up for you. I watched the guy get out of the truck, pick up the pieces of wood, so that he can run it correctly, to pick it up correctly. We all, as residents, need to take it upon ourselves, go out front, sweep it up, pick it up, pick up the big stuff, and when a street sweeper comes, it'll do a better job, it'll be better. We want our streets clean, we want our sidewalks clean, but we all need to work together with that. So, I, Mr. Dillon, I'd like to thank your person, and I'll tell you who it is later, but, um, please clean up the debris. I also would like to see if we can get that bridge on Bay Street, the Septa Bridge, there's graffiti under there again, but it needs a power wash before winter hits, it looks disgusting, it's dirty, it just needs to be cleaned, it needs to be power washed. And I know before we had the fire company do it, and I requested this a while ago, and I didn't see it happen, doesn't mean it didn't happen, it doesn't look like it did, but if we could get somebody to go over there and clean that up, I'd really appreciate it. And that's all I have.
The bridge on Green Lane, on the past, there's a dead deer laying there, and you can't even get down, it's, it's so bad, can we get, I know we keep saying it, but can there any way to cite Penn Dot or anybody to come in and clean up their property? You can't even walk down that street, down that sidewalk.
So bad.
It is impassable.
So bad.
It's so bad, it's, it's embarrassing.
People are walking in the street.
Here's the problem I have, there's things that we can control, there's things we can't control. Like Betty said, why don't people just go out front and sweep their sidewalk, cut some weeds around their tree base, make the side, the house look a little present, you don't need money to do this stuff. The street sweeper comes every Thursday and Friday, even if you don't want to bend down and pick it up, sweep it to the gutter, so that we could pick it up. We have a lot of people that come through this town, take a little, take 10 minutes and, and have some pride in your property. I don't understand whether you're a renter or you're a homeowner, why you can't go out in front of your house and make it look presentable. It's, it's frustrating, it's aggravating, and we need to hire inspectors to send you a note to say, "Please clean up your property," when that's something you should be doing if you had any kind of self-esteem, or any kind of responsibility, clean your property up, stop being a pig, and these people are pigs that won't clean up their property. I'm tired looking at properties in this town that we have to send our inspectors out to clean the property up. Take 15 minutes and clean your property. If you don't like it, you know how to reach me, I'm here every month.
Can I say something? Can I say something? I'd also like to thank the people that do keep their places.
And they gotta live next to a pig.
That's right, that's right.
That's the problem.
Yep.
I just wanted to add one thing I forgot. I wanted to thank John Monday and the Mill Street Run. Thank the chief, because men were there, they ran on their bikes, they were on foot. The Bucks County Rescue Squad had their bike patrol out. And I was there for quite a, my son ran in the eight o'clock race, and then my two grandsons ran at 9:30. So I spent a lot of time that day watching the Mill Street Run, but it was, there were 27 high schools there.
Wow.
It was the largest group of high school, and it was probably one of the largest groups of, in their open race also. And they had, you know, the high schools, they had girls, girls, high school girls and boys. The J.D. teams, the girls and boys ran together. It was amazing, and everybody really had a good time, and the police even told me they were trying to keep up on their bicycles with their runners, they were getting... They, it was quite a day. So thank you, thank your team, chief, and thanks to the rescue squad also for all they did for us that day.
Thanks, Lou. Jim?
If I just may add a little bit to the Mill Street Run. Merle did a fantastic job ordinating everything. He's always got some boy scouts involved to help us with some of the crossings because it's getting more and more difficult to get volunteers. But a quick side note, I got a text from Merle at 7:30 on Saturday morning that we were missing some porta potties. So I called the emergency number, the porta potty guy. He called me back 20 minutes later, explained, "We're missing four." He says, "That's impossible." I said, "Look, I'm the manager, let's get them out." He says, "The only one that can authorize it is Merle Winslow."
Oh, I love it. I love it.
Thank you, Merle.
Thank you, Merle.
I told him, "What's that baseball?" But the guy says, "You're unauthorized."
Now we know who's really in charge.
All right, real quick, just some comments for clarification and whatever. The ordinance on the feral cats reflects the wording that our resident wanted. So that's what's before you this evening. Ralph touched on the street sweeper. We will also be applying for a police SUV, a public works vehicle, as well as the street sweeper, as well as demolition of Chestnut Street in our applications that Merle will be working on, and it has to be in by the end of the month. So I just wanted to mention that. Also on the agenda is this low bid for Otto's Palanta and Sons, an amount of $45,000. This deals with the spur line path crossing the Beaverton Pond. It's to bring it in alignment with the traffic signals. Pendott's been telling us that they want this done for years, we finally got a grant. So it will be ADA compliant, so residents will be walking a little bit out of the normal, but it's a requirement that Pendott's force down our plans. And the other, only other comment is the bids for the Mill Street parking lot. The copies of those bids were in your packet. The issue for council is, do we want to also award the alternate one, which is the storm sewers? I think you definitely should award the alternate two, which deals with the ADA curbs. So what's before you is either awarding the bid to MECO Constructors in the amount of $93,295 for the entire resurfacing of the parking lot, as well as the storm sewers, as well as the ADA curbs. We're not due to storm sewers and just spend, then we'll go to J.D. Morris with an amount of $586,000, $185,000, so.
Can I comment on that, or do you want to wait until we get to the voting portion of that?
Yeah.
I have questions from Jim. So is this the same project in which there was a matching grant awarded, where we would have to, for the repairs of the Mill Street parking lot? Is this the same project?
We had to put up a certain value of the parking lot, they accepted that.
Correct.
The only thing that the borough will have to pay for is the engineering.
Correct.
But the construction cost is part of that package, but I don't know.
Right, okay, so it is that. So my other question is this, I am certainly no engineer, don't claim to be, but clearly, in the last year, two years, I mean, the flooding has been even worse than it's been before all over town, not just there. I just don't want to see us spend a million dollars. I know, it's grant money, and it's not, it's not our money, but I just want to make sure that all those things are being closely considered about the flooding and the design of it and the storm drains. I don't know if that's designed, maybe Amanda would speak to that more, I don't know. But I'm just worried about, you know, you see the state of that parking lot right now is such a mess, and I think half of it is because it's underwater half the time.
Yeah, and I mean, ultimately, that is the issue is that, I mean, most of that parking lot is in a flood plain, and I don't know that there's really any wonderful answer rather than, you know, freeze the entire borough. It's so, it's twitchy, most of the river elevation. That being said, potentially, there can be, you know, some efforts to improve the situation by replacing these storm pipes under the parking lot with this funding.
Which is part of this.
Which would be the alternate that Mr. Dillon just mentioned. Is that going to solve the issue yet? No, it's, you know, it's just the nature of elevation of the parking lot. I don't know that without, you know, frankly, millions of dollars, are we going to solve something that large? It may help though.
I'm sorry, and maybe this is maybe also from this film. This bid is nothing about redesigning, it's just redoing, right? The parking lot itself.
You can't, you can't change the elevations or anything?
No, I just mean even like the, you know, the islands they park at and all that kind of stuff, that's just, this is just a redo.
We would be adjusting just that trailer parking that's in the last row, just to make that regular car parking. But other than that, it would be repaving, resurfacing, ADA curb ramps at certain locations, and then potentially the storm.
Is there any material designed as a repaver that will be underwater? I mean, I know we're not going to stop it from flooding.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we're looking at doing that would just at least
Last.
last longer when it is underwater like that?
Um, I mean, I think at this point, frankly, repaving might be a decent answer. I've seen, I've been seeing the condition of the parking lot.
Right.
It's certainly in need of repaving. So a lot of those cracks and holes, you are getting more groundwater coming up from those.
Yes.
With that, it wouldn't simply be just a standard, like, oh, really? You would see a normal road, you would most likely be going down a little bit deeper in certain areas in order to repair. For example, like right outside of Manion's, in the parking lot there, there's some issues there that we probably have to repair a deeper section. So again, that'll help to improve the situation, it's not certainly.
Sure. And just so I understand, why would we only, why would we go with the lower bid? Like, what would be the advantage, or the, not the lower bid, the lesser of the two projects?
Yeah, so, I mean, the issue is that that is certainly a lot of money to spend, again, it is grant funding. But the beauty of this RACP funding is that it is a little bit flexible. So the borough doesn't need to necessarily spend all of that right now. I believe the state has, I want to say it's 10 years, I can check on that, a 10-year limit on when the money can be spent. So in theory, there are other improvements that have been talked about down the waterfront.
Right.
That money could go towards those things.
Exactly.
But that would mean, as Mr. Dillon said, more engineering potentially.
The only thing we don't want to do is resurface the slot and then dig up storm, storm.
Right, and that's the advantage, is to get that just out, get that out of the way. Because we're, hopefully, we wouldn't dig up a parking lot.
Let me ask you a question. If we say tonight we want to proceed with this, the high, the great bid,
Right.
and next month in October, we change our mind, can we then downgrade or do something?
Um, I mean, there is the 30-day review period, so we certainly can have some time. I think we can always maybe potentially make a motion contingent upon, you know, review of funding and of the 30-day review period.
So we will be meeting October 3rd, which puts us under the 30 days. And our solicitor's not here, so.
I'd recommend that if you're not comfortable going either way, I would table it until.
Okay.
Well, I certainly don't want to pull anything up. I, I know that the drain has got to happen, right? I mean, that part of it.
I say we do the whole thing, but what I'm saying is, like Amanda said, let's say we want to change the lighting and not do the drains.
Right.
Can we do that, or are we obligated then to award this contract to this company? Because he's high-bid on just the paving.
Right, exactly.
So if you were to pull the storm piping out, you would need to award to a separate contractor and then go through that.
Are we violating anything if we say we want to table this until October's meeting?
I don't think so, because again, we still are in that 30-day review period. So we can, I think Matt needs to post on the website the bids, and then we can enter into that 30-day review period and award at the October meeting.
If you're not comfortable taking it.
I don't know, I mean, I'm not, it was just.
It's a tough call.
It is.
I think it can, you know, Monday morning quarterbacks, it can come up with all kinds of opinions. But my gut reaction is, you got the drainage, let's get it done. So at least you know you got a first-class job. I know our guys with the new bucket truck, they addressed all the lighting down at the parking lot. There's like one light, and I don't think we've been fixed yet, but we will fix it now. We have a higher bucket truck, or at least we think we'll be able to fix it. So I think that lighting is adequate, you know, for the time being. And I think showing the state, give us the money, we'll spend it, we'll spend it the right way, and we're aligned for more money, you know?
Okay.
So you're saying, word it to the high bidder. I mean, to the.
To the lowest, it's the responsible bid.
Right.
The whole job.
The whole job, okay, all right.
And again, the uniqueness of this is that there is flexibility in that grant funding. Normally, if there's a grant, we say we need to spend all of it at once, and we try and get as close to that number as possible. So there is some flexibility.
So just so we're clear, though, if we went with that responsible bid of the whole project, it is a redoing of the drainage and a repaving of the parking lot?
Right, and not re, it's to ADA curbs.
All right, any other questions for Amanda?
I have one last question, I'm sorry. Does that include the path along the parking lot of a repaving?
We're not redoing that path, but there is a curb ramp that we would be putting in from the parking lot to that path.
Questions regarding that?
I know it's.
Jim, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Amanda. All right, we're going to go into the next phase of this meeting. Angela, you want to talk?
Yes, I do, Ralph.
Which is the base bid, alternate one or two?
I want to clarify a few things. That was a bomb you dropped on me.
What's over there? What do you mean?
You taking over the Italian Day.
I'm going to take it all over, but I want to work with the Lions and everybody and try to.
Well, no, what happened this year, because of what Sean had, it was my decision to call it a food festival. It's, yeah.
I know.
And we served our Italian food just like we normally do. But I've been doing it for 25 years, okay? And the Lions really know how to operate and run that thing.
Okay.
We really don't need anyone to tell us how to really run our.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we get a meeting together with you and whoever the president of Lions are, and myself, and let's sit down and talk and work it out?
Yeah, see, what happens is, that is our money that we give for our scholarship fund.
Right.
And we give $10,000 out of the year in scholarships, okay? And when you said that.
Well, here's the thing, Angela, a lot of people want to bring it back to the way it was.
Oh, yeah, it will be.
Not just one stand.
No.
That's the problem, and it's been like that for years.
No, it hasn't.
Well, how many stands are down there?
We normally have six to 10 food vendors.
Okay.
Plus about 50 craft vendors. Last year, we didn't have it.
Right, because of COVID, I understand.
And we had it the year before, and we did really well with it.
And you know I'll work with you any way I can.
Oh, I know that, Ralph.
I just want to, I just want to bring it back to the way it was.
Unfortunately, this year was a little different because we had no idea how things were going to turn out.
That's fine.
Because you had the Celtic Festival that got canceled, Puerto Rico Festival got canceled, Afro-American got canceled. And then we looked at it and says, "Okay, we have an opportunity right now, the ship's coming in. So we'll serve the food."
Right, and we discussed this.
Right, so, and unfortunately, I didn't call it Italian Day. And it was kind of hard to get vendors this year because everybody was afraid.
Right, I mean, we're not looking as a borough to take your money away. We know how your organization works.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
And we know how much good you do with the Lions.
Right.
I just wanted to, I mean, if Italian Day's not coming back.
Oh, no, Italian Day's definitely coming back.
Oh, then let's sit down.
Yeah.
I like to sit down with your organization.
Yeah, and it will, and it will come back the way it used to be.
Okay.
Unfortunately, this year, we weren't sure what was going to happen. But was everybody else canceling their festivals? We took a, we took a shot. I mean, I, I was, I was, I didn't even order enough food.
I heard.
Okay, it was just one of those things, just.
So when do you guys meet?
Oh, well, we have our meetings the first and third Wednesday of the month, but.
Maybe you can invite me to a meeting.
That I could do, I'll.
And I'll make myself available.
I'll see, we'll invite you to Wednesday night.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll try not to do another council.
I thought you guys met on Tuesdays.
Uh, King George is not open on Tuesdays anymore. And that, so, but that's where we're at, where King George is two nights a week. Or we can't have it on a Sunday.
But let me tell you, there's a lot of people were upset.
I know they were.
I went down Sunday, Merle called me, we had a sinkhole.
I know.
I was heading with my family, and I came back, I turned around, drove back a half hour to see what was going on. I wasn't there 20 minutes, people were coming up to me saying, "When's Italian Day?" When, I said, "This is a very..." So all I'm saying is, if you guys are going to abandon Italian.
No, we don't want to abandon it.
Let's discuss this at your meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it straightened out, let you know. I don't know how the rumors started, that, say, the Lions Club canceled Italian Day, and we're not going to do it anymore? Because I, I, my wife really jumped on me yesterday, okay? And then I get asked by Donnie, "Why did, why is Italian Day canceled from now on?" I says, "Ask where'd that rumor start?" I couldn't understand it, I didn't start it.
Welcome to our world.
All right, so let's, you're going to meet in October?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll let you know when.
Let me know when I can attend your meeting.
And we'll, we'll hash it out and we'll see what we can do about getting other vendors there. It is hard to get vendors right now, I mean, they're afraid to go out by themselves. They don't want to take.
Big Monica Howard, huh?
Well, I know, well, she made it known that she was upset.
All right, thanks.
I didn't bet you did, okay. But I just wanted to clarify a few things, that we did not cancel Italian Day, and it will be here, I'm sure.
All right, well, I like to just maybe be part of it or help work with you.
Yeah.
I know people want it the way it was 30 or 40 years ago.
Oh, well, no.
They want to bring it back, so if I got to help raise money, or I got to do something, I want to be involved in any way.
Okay, that'll be fine.
So let the Lions, let your group know that I want to help.
Okay, that'll be fine, so, and it's still not taken away, so.
I think a lot of people were confused too, Angela, because I had a lot of people reach out to me and say, "So Italian Day's this weekend?" And I said, "No, there's a food festival this weekend." So maybe they thought, "Oh, is that taking place with Italian Day?"
Well, it did this year, but we.
We didn't have Puerto Rican Day, I understand, you know.
We served our fans. We served our Italian food. We basically served what we served.
But serving it... I'm not going to get into it tonight, but serving Italian food is Italian.
We served Italian food at the corner. But you know. So, no, our... Well, you can't call chicken fingers and French rots Italian food.
All right. Thanks, Angela.
Thank you, Ralph. Thanks for hearing me out.
No problem.
Have a good one.
All right. Mayor, you have anything?
No.
Anybody in the public want to speak on anything before we go? You do?
Hi, my name is Carla Reno, I'm a community organizer. I just want to give thanks to the community for allowing me to have Unity Day. I want to give a special thanks to Chief Henry. Without him, there wouldn't have been a success. Merle came out and walked out there with me to explain to me where to put the... Where they would be able to put the stands at for food and non-food. Chief Henry was amazing. He had coverage. It was a success. It was a great thing. I think it's something that we should do every year. A lot of people really liked it. We honor, and I'm so glad we were able to honor Chief Henry, because we were going to honor him, we were going to surprise him, and I'm glad we did it this year, then next year, because he's been here. He's a great guy, and I wish he wasn't leaving, because I think he's a very amazing person. And once again, I would like to thank you guys for allowing me to have Unity Day. And if God's willing, we'll have it next year, too.
You're welcome back.
Thank you.
Anybody else want... Merle?
Quick, and I'm not going to talk about the board, but...
Thank you.
I'm glad the mayor's back, and I'm glad to hear that they're considering AJ for that position. He's a young go-getter, got a fire in his belly as a fireman, and he's very well-trained, and he's going to be a great asset to the town. As far as Betty's comments tonight, the bridge at Bass Street, that was never in the examination when they did commit and did the bridges. They started with Spruce Street and then went as far as Beaver, but they only did the three in between. So that needs... That should be looked at. And as far as the drainage goes, people are complaining about the drainage all over the place, but yet I ride around town, I see people cutting their grass, and it's going in the street. They blow it in the street. And where do they think it goes? It goes in the drains.
Exactly.
So hopefully, something can be done about that. I think that was the only thing. Chief Henry, I wish you the best. You were great to work with. We'll start on this here.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Merle.
So I'd have room to speak on anything? That ends public participation. Let's go to our regular agenda, number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, sorry, to accept council meeting minutes for August 6, 2021, accept the treasurer's report for July 21, accept the fire chief report for August 2021, accept the inspection department report for August 2021, accept the police chief report for August 2021, accept the public works report for August 2021, and accept the Harvard report for August 2021.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Eddie, question or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance restricting the running of cats at large and the feeding of feral cats by deleting Chapter 2, Part 6, Section 2-602, and replacing with, "It shall be unlawful for the owner of any cat or cats to allow or permit such cat or cats to run at large in the borough. It shall be unlawful for anyone to feed unmanaged or unkempt colonies of cats anywhere in the borough."
Second by Laura. Any questions or comments? The only comment I have is that the young lady that spoke at our meeting, she has helped with all this wording in here, so everybody's on board with this.
Very good.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease and license agreement between the county of Bucks and Bristol Borough for a mail-in ballot box to be located in the first floor lobby at Bristol Borough.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? The only comment I have, Commissioner Harvey has contacted the borough. This is a pretty regulated thing. They have cameras on it, they have somebody watch it. The box locks, and when they leave, there can't be anybody tampering with these things, so it's pretty safe and secure. It will be in the borough lobby for anybody who wants to drop off a ballot. And somebody from the county, I think, is here, so many hours a day, demanding this thing.
Good.
Right?
That's great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver of a land development from McDonald's Remado. Expiration date is 10/17/21.
Second by Mr. Gattori. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose.
I'd like to accept the police chief Steven Henry's retirement letter, last day of work, November 17, 2021.
I have a second. Backed by Mr. Pezza. I tell you, when we're getting a second, Chief, you have to stay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose.
I'd like to approve a purchase of one new street sweeper from U.S. Municipal Co-Stars in the amount of 318 slash 345, the quote 7963.
Second by Mr. Gattori. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the deputy chief, should I say AJ DeAngelis at this point, AJ DeAngelis, to the vacant position.
Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose. Number 10.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the lowest responsible bid from Donato Spaventa and Sons in the amount of $45,033 per Gilmore Letter of 9821 to have spur line path crossing at Beaver and Pond to be in compliance with PennDOT permit as well as ADA compliant.
Second by Mr. Gattori. Questions or comments?